Okay, we will call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are no actions taken in closed sessions to report, bringing us to see three items considered in closed session for action open session. I need a motion on item 18, 19-
Move approval of the stipulation.
Second?
Second by Director Pew. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
President Close?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Statements of abstention? Adjustments to the agenda? Board member request for information? C7, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held on October 10, 2018?
Move approval.
Second.
Move by Director Carl, second by Director Kristoff. Roll call vote.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Abstain.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director, President Close?
Aye. Motion carries. C8, approval of minutes of the special board meeting held on October 17, 2018?
Move approval.
Second.
Move by Director Carl, second by Director Pew. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl? Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Abstain.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield? President Close?
Abstain. Motion carries, and that brings us to C9, special presentation recognizing our certified and classified probationary becoming permanent employees for 2018, 2019.
Good evening, President Close, Director Superintendent Kitamura. We just wanted to recognize the diligence, thoughtfulness, and hard work of our classified and certified staff who have moved from probationary status to permanent status. And so, I know we have a full room, but if any of those members who are with us tonight, who were invited, who became permanent members of our staff, if you would please rise and be recognized? Anybody here?
Can they come down for-
Yes, we're gonna come down because-
Take a picture?
Actually, they have a certificate that they will receive that says, "I made it permanent as a proud employee of Santa Rosa City Schools."
I love it. Come down and get your certificate and take a picture.
And just one last statement, President Close. This will become a regular feature of our board meetings so that as we make permanent both classified and certified staff, they are recognized in an ongoing way. So, thank you for the opportunity this evening.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, C10, special presentation to Superintendent Diane Kitamura by the United States Army North Bay Recruiting Company.
Board members, Superintendent Kitamura, President Close, fellow community members and educators, thank you for your time today. My name is First Sergeant Eric Robleski. I've been in the Army for little over 18 years now, and I've had the experience of seeing outstanding leadership over my time in the Army. I've deployed twice, once to Iraq, once to Afghanistan. And over the 18 years, one of the things that we pride ourselves in the Army is recognizing outstanding leadership. And when tragedy occurs, you see so many people who are willing to do more than the average person. And so many in here deserve to be recognized, but Superintendent Kitamura, what you did after the fires in October deserves special recognition. I had a unique perspective with the fires. My wife is an employee of the Santa Rosa City Schools. I have three daughters who attend the schools, and I was able to see, you know, unfortunately, we lost our house, so I was able to see the way a community comes together. And a community comes together under great leadership. You anticipated needs before we even knew that we needed them. And I can speak personally, but I know that I speak for an entire community. To keep a school district moving after something like that is something that I haven't seen in 18 years of Army experience. So, we have a plaque here, and it says, "Award of Excellence in recognition for your outstanding leadership, hard work, and commitment to the community. Thank you for all you do. 2018, Diane Kitamura." I also, I was recognized by my leadership for taking care of my soldiers after the fire, and they gave me one of these coins. And it's a rhino. Our battalion motto in Sacramento is, "We are the Northern California Rhinos." And our motto is, "Razor sharp, hard-charging, thick-skinned." And we're always moving forward. And I can't think of a better person to have this coin than you. So, thank you for everything you did for my family and for the community of Santa Rosa.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have public comment on non-agenda items, the opportunity for the public to address the board on items not on the agenda. As a reminder, if you have comments about a, on a personnel matter, to please reserve those for a report to Assistant Superintendent of HR. So, we'll start with, and we're up there, and if we can queue up, then that'd be great, so I'll call a few at a time. John Cordopassi is first, then Catherine Howell, then Ginger Matic.
Good evening, John Cordopassi, Santa Rosa High School. As many of you know, I spent a large portion of my career attending meetings here in this room. That came to an end for me last spring, when I finally got too frustrated with the decisions that this board and this district was making. I'd made a decision, I was done coming to these meetings, and I wasn't going to return. But I'm here again tonight, and I'm here because my union asked me to, because my union president asked me to, and my friend, Will Lyon, asked members to come to show up and speak. So, what do I have to say? I'm tired of the ways this district keeps showing the teachers it does not respect them. Respect does not mean cutting off the union president when he's speaking, refusing to negotiate with our union. And it does not mean that it can say and get away with that our union leadership does not represent the people that voted them into office. Respect does not mean claiming there's no money for salaries as we watch the district reserves grow by millions and teachers struggle to pay their bills. Respect does not mean delaying the purchase of textbooks for students as textbook money goes unspent. What does respect mean? Respect means you treat us as the professionals that we are. It means you provide us with the tools to do our job. It means you provide us with the appropriate compensation so that we do not have to choose which bills to pay at the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Howell? Catherine Howell, Ginger Matic, and then Kayla, hopefully that's right, correct me, Kayla Saros? Go ahead, Catherine.
Good evening. I'm gonna have a lot more to say later this evening, but I'm gonna start with something that might seem a little trivial. But I have a question for the board, and why is it during formal roll calls and other procedures, we never call our student board member by her name? It's something that I've noticed as long as I've been coming to board meetings, which is a lot of years at this point. And in our era of equity and unconscious bias, I'm thinking about perception versus intention. And we know that anonymity leads to invisibility. And I think that to give our students a voice, maybe empower them to speak up more, the least we could do is look at that policy and perhaps think about changing it so that her name is on display. I don't think it's a privacy issue. But when we call a roll call or we ask for comment from our board members, they would give her the courtesy of using her name as well as everyone else on the board. So, that's where I'm starting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think that's trivial at all. Thank you. Ginger Matic, Kayla Saros, and then Bill Vosberg?
Hi, good evening, school board and superintendent, visitors, and all my fellow Santa Rosa City School Union peeps. My name's Ginger Matic. I teach at Proctor Terrace Elementary School. I am a special educator. I'm gonna speak to you again, again, about two issues. I'm here tonight to ask you not to delay negotiations. I'm here tonight to request that you negotiate with open and honest dialogue to resolve the issues presented by our negotiation team and our president, Mr. Will Lyon. The district absolutely needs to move forward, not backward, as we seem to always do. Cooperation and communication is the key for this momentum to move forward for our students and all those that work at our school sites, CSCA, SRTA, both. Please demonstrate your leadership skills that I've heard you have by working with the SRTA. My second concern, this is concerning special ed, the love of my life I've worked for many years at. I understand why we are taking back SCO classrooms, why we're taking back SCO students, to save money and to make money. But why are we putting interns and brand-new teachers or soon-to-be credentialed teachers in special ed classrooms without training in behavior management and training in curriculum? Quality instruction for some of the most needy students in our district is and should be our number-one goal. Spend some money and invest in these teachers with conferences, classes, furniture, and curriculum which is functional, and provide time for these teachers to observe other seasoned special ed teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayla Saros, Bill Vosberg, and then Lilly Ambrose.
Good evening. My name is Kayla Saros, and I am a senior at Santa Rosa High School. And tonight, I just wanted to talk about some of the issues that are on our campus. I know a classmate of mine is also going to be talking about this tonight, but I just wanna talk about how Santa Rosa High School takes so much pride in being the biggest and oldest school in Santa Rosa. But the sad thing is, is that our campus truly shows how old and unmodernized it is. So much money is supposedly spent on improving schools, but our campus quad becomes unusable every time it rains because it doesn't have proper drainage. One of the stalls in our Ag Building bathroom hasn't had a lock on it since last school year. The bathrooms constantly don't have soap, and uneaten school lunches can be found overflowing out of trash cans or on the floors around campus because no one seems to like them, and students are always having to stand or sit on the grounds during lunch because there aren't enough tables or benches. With this new administration, students, especially the seniors, feel as if we are not heard by administration and are considered, aren't considered when it comes to making decisions. And I think that shouldn't. Students should be able to express themselves and their opinions because most of us, if not all of us, are just trying to have a good high school experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Vosberg? Bill Vosberg, then Lilly Ambrose, then Lisa Anderson?
Good evening. I see a few familiar faces on the board that I was there. Nice to see you folks again. I'm Bill Vosberg, and thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I retired from Santa Rosa City Schools in 2008. I'm here as a citizen, taxpayer, and former teacher. I began teaching in Santa Rosa in 1976, and taught at Comstock at Piner in Santa Rosa High School. And I had been teaching four years before then, some 42 years ago when I came here. Santa Rosa then was a destination district, and I wish I could still say that now. It was a great place to teach and a great place to raise a family. I moved here to speak tonight because of dysfunction that I see in the district. I haven't seen such tension and distrust between the teachers and the district and the board since the post-strike years of 1981 and 1982. Gotta do a little something with my laptop here, and I am a troglodyte. Can somebody help me? Oh, got it. Okay. We all, teachers, classified staff, ancillary employees, district office, and the board are here for a single reason, and that's to help our students grow academically and emotionally, to help them become responsible citizens and take their place in the world. We all know that. But for the most part, that growth happens in the classroom, in the interaction between the students and the teachers. The role of all the other employees, and the board, and the district office is secondary to this, to help teachers do their jobs, to instruct, inspire, and help students. So, it troubles me to see such discord between the district and the teachers. The board and the district office have the most power in this dynamic. It's incumbent on them, therefore, to, on these two bodies, to heal this rift. It's incumbent upon the board and the district then to be the adults in the room. Here, how might one do this, one might ask? There's a couple suggestions for starting places. We demonstrate our values by the way we spend our money. So, we ought to set high priority on taking care of our employees. Our teachers are not replaceable burger flippers or greeters at Walmart. Our number-one budget item always ought to be the teachers' welfare, their salary, and their health care, and their working conditions. When I started working here, secondly, the district and the union had settled our contracts each year before the first day of school. It created a great feeling of certainty and confidence. Any issues about our jobs, contract, our pay, were settled before we started to work. We knew where we stood on both sides of the bargain. That's not the case now as we drag out for over a year intractably our negotiations. It's not hard to do. People of goodwill can settle the contract issues rather quickly. It's not hard, but you, the district board and board, have that power. We need also to foster an attitude of respect for teachers and the work they do, to cherish them. They make education in this district possible. That's our number-one goal. Thank you.
Lisa, Lilly Ambrose? Lilly Ambrose, and then Lisa Anderson, and then Barbara Gay. Lilly Ambrose?
I'm right here. You're up. Yes. Hi, I'm Lilly Ambrose. I'm a senior at Santa Rosa High School. One of my classmates already spoke about a lot of issues going on with our school. But one in particular that I want to bring up that I felt very passionate about is the mold and the roof at our school. The roof has been being worked on since summer, and I don't know if it's because of that, but we have major holes in our ceiling upstairs. We have major mold problems in the health office, which is the big issue, accounting office, and school museum, and many other classrooms. The counselors right now are actually working in the staff lunchroom and having confidential meetings in a supply closet. The health office is very concerned with the students, a couple students going home from not feeling good being in there. And we also have a lot of concerned teachers and students. So, I just wanted to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Anderson? Lisa Anderson, then Barbara Gay, then Barb Blossom.
Hi, my name is Lisa Anderson. I'm a math teacher at Santa Rosa High School. I'm here just to give a little bit of math history. I've been in the district for 20 years, and over the years, we've had two-year pre-algebra courses. We've had two-year Algebra I courses. Now, we're back to one year for everything with no pre-algebra at the high school level. That's due thanks to our A through G requirements. Last year, we had seven pre-algebra classes, meaning about 200 kids who were not ready for Algebra I, our normal ninth-grade class. This year, they're taking it because they don't have a choice. So, these students who are not ready for high school math are in an academic, college-level math class for preparation for college, and it's been a huge, huge struggle. Right now, I personally have asked our administration for more support classes. We have three for all 2,000 students. Anyone could take the support class. They were filled by, I would encourage you to give more support to the elementary schools and middle schools. We can't fix a lack of math education when we're at the high school trying to get them ready for college. So, we have reading specialists. Maybe we need to have some math specialists at the elementary level. I'm trying to think out of the box of what we can do to get these kids ready. It is actually too late to try to get them ready at the high school level. Right now, we have two teachers who are teaching on, I think it's called the PIPs. Right now, we have two teachers who are teaching on, I think it's called the PIPs, so they're not credentialed, but they have a job for the year. So we're technically short two math teachers. I am concerned that we have a district that is not really attracting the teachers that we need, and due to our contract or lack thereof, we're just not going to get that. And so we need to support our teachers, we need to support our counselors, and all our support staff. Without it, we are not going to have what we need to teach our future students.
Thank you. Barbara Gay, Barbara Gay, and then Barb Lawson.
My name is Barbara Gay. I'm a special education teacher at Cook Middle School. There are three things... Oh, first, I wanted to follow on with some other folks. I hope nobody else transfers into Cook Middle School because we have no desks. Okay. We're also just about out of copy paper, so that's going to affect us as well. But I'm actually wanting to talk about three other items that are bearing down on us and that I have some requests about. One is the negotiations. I request that the board and SRTA work cooperatively, effectively, efficiently, and with positive attitudes to quickly get through our negotiations so that we can hire, possibly, hire teachers that we desperately need in the spring while all these job fairs and career fairs are going on. New graduates out of Sonoma State are looking for jobs around that time. Lots of other districts post-jobs around that time. If people don't know what they're going to earn or what their benefits are, it's going to be hard to make a decision to work at this district. Secondly, at Cook Middle School, we have two things that are close to my heart. One of them is that CCLA is moving onto our campus in August of 2019. The other is that resource-level classes are being eliminated in seventh grade as of August of 2019. We have heard nothing from the district on either of the... Well, on the plan for the resource. Our team has no idea what's going on. When is anybody going to train us? What are we going to do? What are the needs? We would need, and the time is now, to start to look at this and move it forward. It is not going to be done in last-minute kind of thing, leaving us in a lurch, leaving the students with a bunch of confusion. CCLA moving onto the campus, my sense is that the meetings are far and too far apart, that things are not moving along. And again, we're over one-quarter of our way through this school year. When are things going to get done and decisions going to be made? I have colleagues who are talking about leaving the district, leaving teaching, doing anything they can because lots of us do not know what the future holds, and we're afraid that we're going to get down to the last minute, plans are not going to be in place, and we're going to be left holding the bag and looking like idiots and feeling horrible about it. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Barb Lawson. I've taught in this district for many years. Two of my... Three of my children went through most of the district. I've had a lot of positive experiences here. I teach at Elsie Allen. In the past, every winter, my room would be freezing until it started getting warm outside, and then it would start getting warm until it got hot outside, and then it was baking hot. So I was delighted when you had a new heating thing put in. That made me really happy. But then, one morning, it was really cold, for me at least, and some of my students, so I emailed my secretary, who immediately responded, and the guy from the heating group came and looked at it and said, "Nope, it's working just fine. You're at 68. Everybody's warm enough at 68." I got to say, I'm not. And then he went on to explain to me how the system worked and the parameters from the district. So according to him, and I haven't experienced this because the weather's mild right now, right? According to him, at night, if it gets really cold, the temperature will go down to 55. Well, I can just foresee the room staying cold until it gets warm outside if it starts at 55. Heat doesn't go on until 7:00. I get there at 7:40. My students start classes at 8:30. We start meetings 7:50 because we have team meetings before the kids start. Then he also said that when it's at its... When the heat's where it's supposed to be according to the parameters, we can't turn on a fan, so there's not going to be any air ventilation in there. I understand that the system can handle a fan, you know, that these are just parameters. And then on top of it, it gets up... It's allowed to go up to 80 degrees, and the temperature control stops at 3. I'm a special educator. I have 10 triennial IEPs until before Christmas. I just did four today. I am working basically 24/7, folks, okay? I have male coworkers who have babies in the house and they can't work there. They go in all day Sunday. How are they going to stay comfortable? How can they do this? To me, my job is reading nonverbals. My kids come in my room, I look at them, I read their nonverbals, I decide how to interact with them, all right? My nonverbal here is, you guys don't work after 3:00. If that's what you want, I'm sure all of us could do that. I don't think it would help, you know? We're not getting the work done now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I don't have any more blue cards, so we'll go to the CSEA report. President Afonso, I see you up there. No report tonight. SRTA report. I know President Lyon's not here tonight. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Lyon is not here tonight, and I'm giving a report on his behalf and the behalf of SRTA. Catherine Howell, teacher at Cook and chief negotiator for SRTA. Good evening, President Close, Superintendent Kudimura, members of the board, fellow educators, students, and the community. I want to start by thanking my SRTA brothers and sisters for being here tonight, showing our solidarity to the union. I'm proud to be part of SRTA, and I'm proud to be here tonight representing our 955 members. And I would also like to thank every person in this room here tonight as we are all here in solidarity for our students. I say without a doubt that every person here tonight is working towards building a destination district that provides the best education and learning environment possible for every student. We must work together to keep students at the center of every decision we make, every policy we create, every new educator we welcome to Santa Rosa City Schools, and every lesson we create and teach. Santa Rosa City Schools, Sonoma County, California, and absolutely the entire country is in the middle of an attract-and-retain crisis. There simply are not enough teachers, especially in special education and math, and we cannot meet the needs of our students. As we continue to try to support A through G for all students, the demands for teachers will only go up, and Santa Rosa City Schools is not keeping up with that race. Our total compensation for certificated employees is not competitive. Other districts have stepped up with signing bonuses, removing transfer caps for initial salary placement, stipends and bonuses for hard-to-fill positions, and indeed, other incentives. Some of the people that we used to work with now work in other districts for those very reasons. It's time for Santa Rosa City Schools to do the same. Our negotiation proposals put students first. We would like to see smaller class sizes to support student success, workload and caseload limits for our special educators and our special education specialists like our school psychologists, our speech and language pathologists, our nurses who support our most vulnerable students. We need to increase compensation in both salary and health care to attract the highest-quality educators for Santa Rosa City Schools for our students, rather than lose educators each year to neighboring districts with better offers. And we need to protect our students by giving them stability. We need to attract highly-qualified educators, and we need to keep them by improving our working conditions. Teacher transfers between schools and reassignments in grade level or program disrupt student learning, disrupt the programs at sites, and add stress to an already stressful job. We hope to negotiate contract language that will keep students and teachers together and minimize the moves that hurt our schools. I look forward to the upcoming October 30th meeting of the SRTA and SRCS negotiating teams, and I know that we can collaborate to turn our attract-and-retain crisis around and create a destination district for quality educators who will stay in Santa Rosa City Schools and successful students who will leave Santa Rosa City Schools, ready for college and career, ready to move forward, not backward. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Superintendent report.
Thank you, Catherine Howell, for your report. I heard so many commonalities in what she just talked about and what I think we all also believe in. So I agree. Let's come together on October 30th, and let's, through action, show what it is that we want to do in the future about keeping kids at the center. I say that in all sincerity, and know that we aren't always going to agree. We aren't. I mean, it's just nature. It could be them I don't agree with, it could be you. It's just a part of being a human being. But I really want to start this next process of negotiations with common understanding about just about everything: the money, the terms, what we define as terms, you name it. Because if we are... If our mindset and your mindset about a particular thing is different, I don't know how we come together. So I think that's one of the most important things I look forward to as we begin the negotiation process. And I think you know that we... Just as Catherine said, kids being at the center. Myself and this board believe the same thing. So let's make it happen. Let's make it happen through our actions that that is something that comes as a reality, okay? So that was really what I was going to say at the beginning, but I wanted to say that. I want to... Is Trish Terrell in the audience, or Maddie Doyle? Okay, Sean Fleming? Or Chef Spires? All right, well, I hope you're watching on TV. I wanted to give a gigantic thank you for them, for Trish inviting us to Creo last week for lunch. And I will have to tell you that I thought it was going to be a few teachers, Trish and a few teachers, just to get to know us better. And I'd love to do this at any of the sites with our cabinets so that you... I had a number of people say, "And you are?" "And what's your name?" And I thought I kind of stood out like a sore thumb, but obviously not. But anyway, so that was a wonderful opportunity, and I'd love... We'd love to do that. I will have to tell you, though, when I found out it was going to be like the entire staff, it's like, whoa, what's going to happen here? I was a little bit like, ooh, nervous. But we went in, and wonderfully, the Creo culinary class provided a lunch for us that they had cooked. And they... What it was, was to show the integrated curriculum between English and culinary English and auto-technology, and it's called PAWS. It is, I don't want to get this wrong, Pathway Academy for Work and Service. So it was also... This is a great idea, too. The first luncheon entitled "Don't Eat Alone." And so all of this staff has made a commitment not to eat alone, but to come together and eat with somebody. So I thought that was awesome as well. And the lunch was vegan and non-vegan, so you have to give it to the kids about that. Give it up for the kids. What PAWS showed was the exact thing that we are working towards in terms of work-based learning through apprenticeships, especially for in our A through G graduation requirements, the specialist certificate or diploma. They haven't decided yet what that's going to be called, but an alternative way in which to meet the graduation requirements. I saw that on that day. Very, very exciting. The work-based learning, they've been involved. I don't know if some of you have heard about the Creo Redline Car Fest put on by the kids through this program, something we need to take a look at next year and be able to attend. So I just wanted to thank the four teachers for inviting us, and I also wanted to put it out there for you, that if you'd like us to come to... You don't have to give us lunch. Maybe we'll bring you lunch. But if you'd like us to come, we would love to also meet you and get to know you, and for you to get to know what it is we do in the district so that nobody says "And you are?" to me. So thank you very much. Hey, thank you. So for my report, two business items. I had a meeting with another property developer who's interested in doing set-asides for teachers and school staff in a new downtown housing development. There have been lots of overtures from different developers. They're all preliminary discussions, but I'm really excited about the continued interest that this keeps being a topic of conversation. It seems like there are a lot of people interested, yes. So we're very much supporting this idea and hope to bring some firm proposals to the board at some point. Superintendent's going to put a survey out gauging the interest in this kind of housing soon, so you can look for that. The second thing is I want to extend a thank you to NBC Nightly Movies, who did a six-part, one-hour series about Santa Rosa's wildfire recovery, the second part of which is all about Santa Rosa City Schools. If you haven't seen that, I just posted a link to that on my school board Facebook tonight, and that connection came through one of our teachers who happens to be here tonight, too. Kate Glusby, thank you, connected NBC with our district, so... And we like that kind of attention. Thank you. Sorry. Hopefully that was okay. But that kind of attention is good because we're continuing to get philanthropic dollars for our efforts, and so we like that. So thank you for that. Then next, I want to talk about the SRTA president's report and the incident at our last meeting. There are a lot of people upset about the fact that I cut off President Lyon at the last meeting. And I've heard that there's a feeling amongst SRTA leadership and some members that the board is not interested in hearing from teachers and that I am taking actions to minimize SRTA's voice. So I'm going to speak for myself and also the board, and first I'll say I'm sorry that you feel that way, genuinely, and say that it is neither the desire nor the intent of the board or me to minimize SRTA's voice. We want to hear from teachers. We want administration to collaborate and consult with teachers. We consistently encourage that. And I can see where my actions at the last meeting might cause you to doubt that, and for that, I apologize. I believe that... I wrote a letter to Will, to Mr. Lyon, and I think that's been published, so I'm not going to rehash the whole thing, but I do want to provide some brief explanation. You know, my main responsibility as board president is just to run this meeting. It's a totally weird way to do business, but it's a business meeting. It's the only way we do business, and that's the main job. And the superintendent and I work hard to create an agenda that, number one, gets students home early, or as early as possible, and then, number two, gets teachers who are here to give reports home as early as possible, and then, number three, to get administrators who are here to give reports home as early as possible, and then cabinet and people who want money from us, they're here to the bitter end, and that's too bad. But that's how we organize it. And we try to do that to create... To make them as predictable as possible, and there's only so much we can do. So public comments at the start of the meeting are supposed to only be about things not on the agenda. That's the one part we really can't control. And Mr. Lyon is correct that the SRTA report has never been limited in length or content. And so he's also correct in that my directing him to bring his comments back about the agenda item to the agenda item was unprecedented. I admit that. And it is not something I took pleasure in doing. In fact, it was a surreal and difficult moment. You can see that on the tape. It's painful to watch. But as much as my action was unprecedented, it's also unprecedented that a union president has talked for six, or eight, or 10, or 14, 20 minutes, which has happened...
which has happened, about lots of agenda items. They’ve usually been brief and, and in the past, union presidents save their comments about action items for the action items. And, you know, the, the most visible memory of this is Andy Brennan because he would fly down dramatically with his suit and his coattails flying in the wind with blue cards throughout the whole entire meeting. And, and so this is something that I, that I talked to Will about last, last April, and I explained to him that I don’t want to limit the report, we don’t want to limit the report. But asked his help in keeping this in check so that we could control the length of the meetings and control the pace of the meetings. And so, comments are properly placed throughout the agenda. And when I spoke with him a week ago or so, he says he doesn’t quite remember that part of our talk on that day, it was during a heated discussion about A- through G. And I take him at his word that he didn’t remember that because it was in fact a heated discussion, A- through G. So, I, you know, I regret that I was not more clear about my reasoning, my intentions that night when I stopped Mr. Lyon. And I do want to thank Director Sheffield for his explanatory remarks that came later in the evening that said that I was unable to in my flustered moment, but unfortunately most teachers were already gone. So, since then, I know there’s been a lot of talk. I know one of the things that has been said is that this was a power grab by the board. Now, I, I just want to say that this isn’t the case. You know, our, our only duty in this meeting is to do our business, you know, make the, make the decisions we have to make and provide public comment. But we go out of our way to provide an opportunity for the collective bargaining units to have a voice, for the parent groups to have a voice, and, and other community members have to voice at different times. We go out of our way to make this a more inclusive and interactive meeting. And that means we’re here late a lot of times. I’ve heard that this is a way to minimize attendance. Please know that this is my favorite thing, even when you’re mad at me. Seeing everybody here is great. I encourage everyone to come all the time. I have asked an open session a few times for ideas about how to incentivize board meeting attendance. Because it’s to our benefit to have as few filters between, you know, our words and your ears. We want everybody to hear this. And, and when I talk to teachers privately, I say, “How can we get more teachers here? So, if you have any ideas on that, I’m all ears, please suggest them. We like you here, we want you here, and we want more students here. And I bet that our Director Mackin has done a good job getting more Santa Rosa High students here since we had a couple, we’ve had a few there. So thank you for that. So, it’s just, please, those are misunderstandings and you’ll just have to believe me, but I’m going to ask you to do that. In any case, I do apologize for that. I make you, I apologize for making you feel less valued, it is not my intent. And I will affirm that the SRTA report is unlimited. And at the same time, ask for some understanding for the fact that we have to run a meeting that is somewhat predictable and that we invite people from the community and we have students here and we have all sorts of people here. And it’s really helpful if we can put things where they belong throughout the night. So, it’s unlimited. And also, I’ll ask you to keep it in mind that those are the goals of our meeting and how we agendize things. Now, Vice President Carl and I are lawyers and we work in this system that is by design adversarial. It is an adversarial process and it’s adversarial because it gives some finality and predictability and, you know, brings the best out in each side’s efforts to be right. So it’s our job to argue our rightness and zealously do that, why we are right, why our client is right. And it is a zero-sum game. There are winners and there are losers. So this is a different situation. We have ongoing relationships and we are a mission-driven organization, one that Catherine spoke well of tonight and the superintendent, that we all believe in. We are a mission-driven organization. Now, I know that my, my intent when I do things, when I say things, when I make decisions and my boards, and I can be right about our intent. And you can be right about your feelings and your responses to them and your intent. And we both can be right. And we can both dig in and defend them, our rightness, our relative rightness, every two weeks. We can go to battle, just like we do in court, every two weeks. And on every contentious issue, I guarantee there are defensible positions on both sides. There is no black or white, ever, in relationships. And I think we’re all adults and we can agree on that. You know, sometimes both sides can, everyone can be sort of right sometimes, two sides can be both right at the exact same time and there still be conflict. So, we can do this battle every two weeks that we’ve been doing for a really long time. And at the end of those nights, we can all leave just a tiny bit more depleted and a tiny bit more distracted from our central mission, which is to educate kids for college and career and citizenry. So, I have suggested before and I’m suggesting again that we figure out a way to relate to each other differently. To have a less adversarial relationship for the board and, and teachers and admin to all relate to each other and discuss things in a way that has less conflict. Because the more we have conflict, the less we’re focused on our central mission. Less energy we have for that. So I’d like us to do something different. And last spring, I asked for some ideas, you know, should we do kind of a design thinking project? What should we do to, to change this relationship? And I got a couple responses from a couple teachers. I didn’t have a specific response from the SRTA leadership. I, in my communication to the SRTA leadership after this last meeting, I again, because I didn’t have a specific suggestion, Diane and I came up with putting together a facilitated committee on culture and communication, and I’d really like to pursue that unless someone else has another idea. But we haven’t yet kind of had a yes from that either. And so I am asking again for SRTA and the board facilitated by a pro who knows how to do this stuff because it’s complicated, like all relationships, to work together to improve collaboration and communication. Because all of our intent here is good. Catherine is exactly right. Everyone in this room is focused on making sure that kids have a good education in this district. So that’s it. Thank you. We’ll start with Director Kristoff tonight. No report tonight? Okay. Director Fong? No report tonight. Director Sheffield? Director Anderson? Director Pugh?
I always have a report.
Oh, Director Anderson! Yes, good.
So, you know, I don’t think I’ve had an opportunity to say that I went to the Fall Maria Correo Choir Concert and there was no ghosts, there were no ghosts in the rafters. So, it was truly, it was a completely different experience and we are all very, very grateful to Mike Raff. I also went to the Hidden Valley Pasta Q and that’s always a great community event and this year was particularly poignant, of course, and it included, in addition to being the anniversary of the fires, the honoring of Mike McGuire who passed away not long ago. And he had, they put up a little library, just like he used to have in front of his house that burned down. So that was very cool. I also, last week, attended a school services workshop called “Unraveling the Mystery of School Finance,” a very sexy event. And among the mysteries that were unraveled were things like why and how district budgets, judge budgets change constantly. Unlike in the private sector when you, where you set a budget and it’s the budget for the year. So they, they brought a lot of light into the fact that actually, this district budgets should change constantly. And to that end, they actually suggest, if it’s possible, that the board see a monthly budget report because we really should be getting a good grasp on what’s coming ahead for the interim and under, so that we understand the interim changes before we even see the interim. So that seems like a great idea if that’s possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Pugh.
Visiting schools and making myself visible around the district and it’s been going rather well. So, leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Director Carl.
Thanks. Since our last reports, I and a few other board members attended the opening of Maria Correo High School’s new football field and track. And we also, several of us attended Pioneer High School’s opening of lights on their field that happened to be at the same time that they were having a whole bunch of other activities and homecoming, et cetera. I was struck in both cases, and I think all of us that attended were, at how engaged students were, how engaged parents, staff, site staff, lots of site staff that were on, on both, as well as boosters and just community members. We ran into some folks that don’t have kids in the school, but they’re community members and they like to come and, and see, you know, what’s going on at the school. So, it was, it, it always is interesting to see, it’s always fun to, to go check it out. But when it’s tied to improving facilities, and we got some more comments today on other facilities that need to be improved, it’s nice to see that action is taken and that it, it supports students.
Director Mackin.
So I’d just like to thank the students, I think they’re gone now, but thank, thank them for coming to speak because I think, as has been said, ultimately, we are all here for our education and we want to hear the concerns of students because, you know, we talk a lot about what a student wants in their education. So, and also, we had our first Specialist Certification, or, whoa, Specialist Creation Meeting earlier this month and it’s a really good team, I’m excited to see where the project goes. And then, in addition, right now, I’m actually working on a project at Santa Rosa High School and it’s Best Plus oriented and the goal is actually to use student government to honor students who positively contribute to classrooms, but maybe can’t show that through their grades. And I’m hoping that if it goes well, we can expand that through the district.
Back to you Director Pugh, CSBA and NSBA Report.
Just a short report, just so everyone knows, the National School Board Association President on an annual basis hosts the Board of Directors for the National Association. And they will be coming to visit our schools and we’ll have our Board of Directors meetings that will take a couple days to get through our agendas. But they’re here to see our schools and to learn from what goes on in California. It’s about 25 members on the Board of Directors. They kind of, they’re elected from their local states. They are quite a accomplished bunch of experts when it comes to school board governance and so forth. Again, they’re, they’re anxious to be here, getting a lot of phone calls and they’re flying in from all across the United States. Well, we have all our regions represented and it’s testimony to the interests that California generates in public education. And they’re like, like, for example, they’re, they’re really interested in finding out about the Voter Rights Act. Fascinated by that. A lot of states don’t even know what that is and what’s going on in California. So, this is something we do every year with the rotation of the presidents and this year is my turn to do it. And I think we’re going to have an excellent time. The superintendent’s been very helpful in organizing and, and organizing our hometown visit tour. Thank you, thank you Superintendent. Good tomorrow.
Can I say something? Thank you Director Pugh and NSBA President Pugh. I also want to thank Lori Kolachek who has been extremely helpful as we’ve organized the hometown tour. We’re very proud to be able to show off schools, our schools, our community. Who knew that there were so many different products we could gather in Sonoma County? Delicious, wonderful products to be able to share with 25 directors. But the most important thing that we’re sharing are our kids. They’ve actually been emailing the directors already so that when they come, come to the school sites to tour, the, the student, the child will be actually paired up with that director so they can walk around the school together. So I think that’s pretty cool. And I think Director Pugh is still writing to the student that you met from the last tour last year.
Right, Charlie from New Jersey. He writes me like every couple days, all kinds of different things. He was a fourth grader when I met him, now he’s a fifth grader. And we’re talking about, you know, what’s it like to be in New Jersey and going to school there and it’s a lot different than here.
So when you see the bus on the 28th and 29th and 30th, don’t be alarmed. It’s just a bunch of directors coming from all over the nation to enjoy Santa Rosa.
No big deal. Cool. Okay. Thank you. So, brings us to the consent agenda.
Move Approval Items E2 through E7. I will second.
Move by Director Carl, second by Director Sheffield. Roll call vote, please.
I’m sorry, could you say that one more time?
Absolutely. Move by Director Carl, second by Director Sheffield.
Director Carl. Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Kristoff? Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Board Member Mackin?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, that brings us to our F Agenda. F1, Action Item Approval Resolution Recognizing November 2018 as Native, National American, Native American Heritage Month. Sorry about that, retreating of that.
President Close, Board Member Superintendent Kiddermura. I’d like to introduce first, as in support of the resolution, our Native American Community Worker, Ms. Elizabeth Billy, and she’ll, she has a brief presentation and some understanding about tonight’s resolution. Ms. Billy.
Yes, my name’s Elizabeth and I’m the Community... Community Worker for the District and in my role, I serve as the liaison between the school administration and also the community for the Native American students to increase academic achievement and parent involvement and also cultural awareness. We are currently serving approximately 160 students and the, the services that are available that, that I have been providing are tutoring, counseling, mentoring, accountability. We do family fun nights every month, quarterly cultural events. Also, I’ve established a parent committee and we are eight strong. We had a meeting last night. I do home visits, student check-ins, and one of our largest events is every year, at the end of the year, we honor our graduates. And we do that at a school site and we honor the eighth graders who are promoting into high school and just promoting education and then honoring the graduates who have graduated and making them college-ready. And it’s a big celebration for our families and it’s been a success so far. We do a banquet, we honor them with traditional dance and song, we give them beaded feathers and also gifts. And this year, we’re going to have a keynote speaker and, so anyways, we’re really excited about that and we, we work on that for a couple months. One of the most things I’m proud about the program is that I’ve started on the, on the high school campuses, a Native American club. And right now, we have a club on every campus except for one. And that’s just because we don’t have that many students there identified yet. So, tonight I brought a president of one of those clubs to, to share with you.
Hello, my name is Yakes Brown. And actually, before I get started, I would like to present Superintendent with one of the feathers that we give to our graduates. I am a Pomo from the Lamban of Pomo Indians in Clear Lake, California. My parents are here with me because I’m a little bit nervous because this is my first time doing something like this. But I’m a senior at Pioneer High School and I initiated the Native American Club at Pioneer last year in order to help bring together some of the students that I knew were native and that didn’t know much about their culture in hopes to help guide them and teach them a little bit more. Some of the things that I am involved in are the Native American Youth Action Team that’s sponsored by Grayton. I’m in Link Crew for Pioneer High School, Early College Magnet Program, Key Club, Native Club, of course, and I’m the Vice President for Mountain Biking Club. I’m currently on my fourth UCLA class for a law program. And I’m on the Site Council for Pioneer High School as well as... Pretty much that’s about it. And I’m also involved...
As well as just going to school all day.
Yeah. So, a couple reasons that I initiated Native Club or founded it was to, as I said before, help the Native American students be more in touch with their native side, help involve them in culture activities such as basket weaving, as we brought here tonight, some hand games that we’re going to have... Some hand games that we're going to have some of our elders teach us and some beadwork that we have the California Indian Museum and Cultural Center teaching us. And the California Indian Museum and Cultural Center, also known as CIMCC, is teaching us about college readiness and as well as post-high school readiness. So preparing for jobs for those who are not wanting to go to college or not motivated to go to so they feel they can go right into the workforce. But also the transfer process and the application process for college. And one of our main things is that we're not an exclusive club that only allows Native American students into the club. We're very inclusive. So we have our supporters, who are those who are just not Native American but want to learn more about the culture and feel that it's very important to them. And some of the goals that I have for the club are to, I'm really trying to create a solid foundation for the next few generations. Because my sister is present here and she's a freshman. So her and her, our cousins and friends are native. And I want to help them be able to continue this club and help those who are the younger generation after them continue it so it just can keep on growing and keep on being stronger. Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. So wait, wait. Stay there for a second. The board may have questions. And where are your parents?
So this is my mom right here.
Okay.
And my dad is right here in the back.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And then Ms. Delmar, introduce yourself.
My name is Delmar Billy. I get to hang out with Liz. But I also work at Piner High School as one of the restorative specialists in our district.
All right, Director Kristoff.
I want to thank you for stepping forward and giving this report. Oftentimes, when we pass a resolution like this, it's just kind of perfunctory. We just go ahead and do it. But it's so nice to have people come and show how something is really taking place. My history, when I was first started teaching, was at Comstock. I had two Pomo families, six children that I knew that started at seventh graders that did not finish middle school. That was one of the saddest moments of my life when I realized that my last student, Virgil, had not, he decided he didn't want to go to school anymore. When I was, I'd just finished my graduate work. I didn't have a credential. I was offered a job to take over the school up at Stewart's Point. I was going to be a principal and a teacher. And I went out and met the teacher who had been there. The principal had been there, was Native American. And he was a wonderful man. He was going back to do doctoral work. And I spent two days with him, meeting the families and going around to see what we could do to help the school to improve attendance. There, I think there were 19 children that were supposed to be attending. Five were there the day that I attended. After a couple of days of discussing this, I started looking up statistics regarding the success rate for our Native American populations. And it was a very saddening thing. And so it's so important, I think, for us in this district to realize the rich heritage that you bring with you to our community and our communities in the northern California area. And so anything you can do and anything this district can do to support you, I think, is really important. It's about time. It's about time. Thank you again.
Thank you. Director Pugh.
Just recently, for the Pacific region, I attended a Pacific region meeting for the National School Board Association in Park City, Utah. And one of the presentations that was made there was the leadership from Alaska, where we don't refer to them as people as Native Americans, but First People. And some of the, and they honestly admit that the school system made a tragic mistake by creating boarding schools for little kids, or it could be first grade. And they would be raised at a boarding school. It was decimated the ability for students to maintain and learn their language. Now, is there a language from your tribe?
Yes, but there's different variations of the Pomo language. But one of the major, I guess, documented languages, like the knowledge of it is actually at the University of California, Berkeley. So they do have the largest library in California and probably the United States about the native language.
Is there something that we can do as a district to help you and your fellow students with language acquisition?
I think that just helping us fundraise for field trips so that we can actually get kids on buses or just transportation to get them to Berkeley to actually see the library so that we can have tours, to look through it and the ability to look through the language and the, all the different cultures and heritage that it houses within its libraries.
That would be great. If we could do something that would help promote that, that would be wonderful. What they did in Alaska is they, for elementary school children, would allow children to, through a grant process, create dioramas and so forth. And then have elders speak to the language of what was going on in these, about dioramas and books that have been published. I thought, oh, what an interesting and novel way to help maintain language. Because it's so important, I think, to your culture and identity. The other interesting thing, too, in Alaska, and I'll share this, is big geographical areas, huge school districts. The one district we were looking at, actually taking a trip there, is the size of Montana. Just huge. And a very small population of students that migrate seasonally. And in a year's time, are back to their original campsite. And yet, they're entitled to a free and public education. And it gets landlocked and to a point where people cannot get to the students. And the last thing I have to say is, Alaska also has a hiring challenge. There were over 900 teacher positions that went vacant this year. You just can't hire them in. Thank you. Thank you for your service. And I appreciate your comments. And if there is, as Mr. Kristoff mentioned, if there's something that we can do to help grow population and provide support needed, we are more than happy to do that.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Director Carl and then Director Fong.
Thank you. Whenever we have presentations by students, especially ones that are quite good, and you undersell yourself. If this is your first one, I'm really impressed.
Thank you.
I'd like to know, what are your plans after Piner High School?
Well, as I said before, I'm already pretty involved in the UCLA law courses, so I'm hoping to apply there. But I'm also looking to apply UC Davis, UC Berkeley, UC Irvine, University in Nevada Reno and San Diego State University.
And the long-term goal?
Honestly, I'm really interested in law, but I'm also really interested in science. So right now, I'm really trying to decide what I want to major in. So one of my backgrounds is biology as I'm in the third year of my Health Science and Biotechnology class at Piner High School. But since I have a decently structured law background and English background, I'm also looking into that, too.
Piece of unsolicited advice. There's plenty of time. And a science background, if that is a major and you decide eventually you want to go into law, is a great thing. When I first went to law school at Berkeley, I had a political science background with an English minor in speech and drama as an honors program. And that was sort of the typical way that people did it. But at Berkeley, you weren't drawing a lot of typical students. And there were students from all over the country. And I had several folks in my class that were geology majors, microbiology majors. And the areas of the law that exist when you have that science background opens up all kinds of doors as well. So it's the education value that you'll get in college, where it takes you four, eight, 10, 15 years out, what career changes might occur. If you've got an aptitude for science, use it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Director Fong and then Director Sheffield.
That is really good advice, Director Carl. I would second that. Director Pugh, you brought up something that almost made me cry because my first teaching experience was in Utah. And it was at an Indian boarding school. Broke my heart. I got out of there as fast as I could. So I want to thank district, thank everyone. Thank you, you, for creating the opportunity for Piner High School and the other schools for creating these opportunities for leadership for our kids, all of our kids. And to you particularly, for stepping up like you are. Thank you very much. That was very impressive. And I know all of us are wishing you well. So way to go, everybody.
Thank you.
Director Sheffield.
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, how proud we all are of you and that you're a product of our schools, which definitely, we feel that. And you're representing a small part of the school population, but it's such an important part of our history. And so I just want to say thank you for preserving culture. And thank you for showing pride in your identity.
I don't want to repeat everything that my colleagues have said, but I echo their compliments and their thanks. And you're a very impressive young man. I think you're going to do a great job. I really do want to echo Director Carl's comments about following your love for science. That's what I did. I have a science background and then went to law school. And if you don't end up doing the science or even a science-related field of law, it helps teach you to think.
Right.
And it's fun. Okay, so thank you.
I'm working for me, too. Go ahead. Thank you. Then I want to say one more thing.
Superintendent, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. It's all right. I want you to school us right now a little bit.
Uh-oh.
So First Nation, Native American. What is it to help us, learn, teach us? So you heard Director Pugh talk about First Nation, First People.
Yes.
And I know in Canada, the Canadian educational system, First Nation is its own subgroup. And it's called First Nation. So tell me what you think about that.
I think that, I've met actually a couple of people from different Native Wellness groups. Well, actually, Native Wellness is a group itself, but other groups, and they prefer to go by Indigenous Peoples. Because they feel that the term Native American means that they belong to this country and not the country that was here before the colonizers have come. So I'm going to say Native American just because that's what I've told everybody growing up. But I'm trying to adapt to the Indigenous title. But in all actual, oh, sorry, go ahead. So I'm really okay with Native American or Indigenous. First People, First Nation will all be okay with me. The one that I really just don't like is just Indian.
You all heard. Okay. And Director Pugh, you'd like to make the motion?
I'd love to make a motion to approve the resolution recognizing November 2018 as a National Native American Heritage Month.
A second. Move by Director Pugh, second by Director Anderson. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh. Director Anderson. Director Kristoff. Director Fong.
Aye.
Director Carl.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
President Close.
Aye.
Board Member Mackin.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
You did great. Okay. So this brings us to F2. An action item, trustee area, two candidate interviews to select a board member for the 2018-2022 term due to a vacancy. This is not something that comes up often. So we, we have, we had five applicants, all who were highly qualified and great. And it's exciting that we had so much interest. Two subsequently withdrew their applications due to time commitments. And so we have three great applicants. So the way this is going to go is that we're going to interview each applicant here in open session. Each applicant will get the exact same questions. The other applicants are upstairs in the conference room and will remain there until it's their time to be interviewed. After those interviews, we will take public comment. So you have time to submit a blue card after you hear the interviews. After we take public comment, we will, as a board, we will rank our, we have ranking sheets that we will complete. Sorry, this is new to me, too. We have ranking sheets that we'll complete during which we'll take a five-minute break. And we'll come back and engage in a discussion in open session about our vote and then actually take our vote. So this is all going to be live in, you know, short order. We're going to have a new board member. So that's the, that's the process. I did get a blue card from Matt Park for a non-agenda item. Matt, you were too late. I'm sorry. So I'll see you in a couple of weeks. All right. Okay. So our first candidate, Carolyn Cole Schweitzer. Is that right?
That's correct.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, is that?
How's that?
There you go. You want to, everyone here can probably hear you, but there are people, believe it or not, watching at home.
Okay.
So we want them to hear you, too. All right, so each of us has a question to ask. And you can give us our answer. There won't be any follow-up questions, though. Okay?
Thank you.
So mine is the first one. And it is, what are you proud of in this district?
I have a student at Piner High School. And not having had any experience with other high schools, I can only speak for Piner, as well as the Piner Olivet Charter School where he attended. I've been so impressed with the level of support from teachers, the academic level. To be honest, when we were first thinking about high schools, Piner was not my first choice. But I knew if my son had a good foundation, which he did, he could succeed anywhere. Piner has blown me away. Their early college magnet program is so exceptional. The options are there for children. The hope is there. The teachers, the commitment. If I can be a part of that and support that, the vision and goals of this school board district, I would be really thrilled. So I'm just very impressed with the strides that are being made to address the needs of all students, to help those who are accelerating to achieve more. And for those who need more help, they're getting the support they need as well.
Thank you. Director Kristoff.
Welcome. What would you like to accomplish as a board member?
I would like the experience of working I would like the experience of working with each and every board member as a team, working together to pass policies that reflect the values and goals of the community and that speak for every child in the district.
Anything else?
Well, I've recently been reviewing all of your goals and visions, and every single one is, aligns with how I feel, and I would love to support the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
I've got your next question.
Yeah, he's the second part.
Well, there is one answer, so I'm not sure, yeah.
I've got your third question. As a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or primary role?
To be a part of the body of the, of the board, to act in accordance with the bylaws, to be a conduit to the community, and to act and support the views and values of the community as they affect students in a positive way. I've been doing a little bit of homework because I'm not super familiar with school boards. I know that we will, that the trustees create the policies, and they select the superintendent, communicating with the community and working with the superintendent to support the staff and faculty.
Director Sheffield.
All right, I have question number four for you. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents, family, and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Well, I think it's important for parents to be encouraged to know about meetings that are coming up. It's extremely important to communicate. We get phone calls, we get emails. The level of transparency is very high. It's important for parents to be encouraged and community members to be encouraged to come to meetings such as this, to attend the meetings that are available, the opportunities made available to them at their own school, and to voice their opinion. I think the job of the school board is to listen and then to make a decision in favor of the students.
Great, so I have your next question. Could you please summarize your strengths or the strengths that you would bring as a member of the board?
Well, I have a very varied background. I have a master's degree in linguistics. I had more of a rocky start in school. In the seventies, they had a thing called ELP, which was Extended Learning Program. I was a part of that. Every once in a while, they'd take us to a portable, and there'd be a man sitting there with splotches on paper and things like that. I was very nervous, and I think at one point, I didn't pass the test. And I remember that I sat alone in the classroom while the other students went out and did other things like playing with parachutes or going to the junior high to sit in on classes. I don't think anyone should ever have that experience. In some ways, though, it has really fortified me. I went on to get a good degree. I remember my teacher one time said to me, "The reason you're not with the other kids is because you're not smart enough," and I don't think anyone should ever be told that. I've worked in nonprofits. I've worked for startups. I worked at Apple, Webex. I grew up in the South Bay. Our family moved here in 2005. I worked at the Junior College, and I, I believe I know Vice President Bill Carl from the foundation where I worked. And I'm a hard worker. I'm very concerned about our community, very concerned about my son's education. I'm very happy with the education he's getting, and I believe I bring a lot of, a lot of different skills, and I hope that they fit with what you're looking for.
I have the next question, Carolyn. What will you do to become a more effective person as a board member?
Well, number one, I'm going to educate myself on how everything works. I would become educated on the various issues of the community, what the board is facing, what they are coming up against, what they hope to achieve over the next few years, and how I can provide assistance and support and guidance in that area.
Thank you.
We forgot to tell Director Mackin that she has a responsibility in this process.
All right, I have your next question. Would you likely run for the seat after one term?
Could you please repeat that?
Would you likely run for the seat after one term?
I don't know, I'll be honest. I honestly couldn't tell you how, where my life would take me in four years. If I enjoyed it and things worked out, yes, I'm sure I would.
Carolyn, I have the last question. You'd be a board representative from your area, and you've talked about Piner. How does that inform your work, and how do you view your responsibilities as a board member representing your area versus representing all students in the district?
Well, I think Piner is a very diverse school. I think they have a lot of special needs because of that. My son has got a range of friends, and I just think it's wonderful what's going on there. I don't know what all the needs are at the other schools, but I am in full support of sort of the renaissance that's happening at Piner High School, the various programs that are taking off and the opportunities that students have. I'm especially excited about the A through G courses, but also still leaving in the option for going towards trades and having, even though they're doing some of the A through G courses, being able to go that direction as well. I think that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
All right.
Fairly painless.
Mr. Polos, is that, or Polos?
Polos.
Polos? All right, we have a board member who's taken just a little break for a second, so I'll ask you to hold on just a second.
Not a problem.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Jeff Polis, we've got eight questions for you, and we're each going to ask you one, and then you can go back to the conference room. Oh, and yeah, if you want to sit up and lean into the microphone so everyone can hear you in here and at home. And the first one is from me. It is, what are you proud of in this district?
What I'm proud of in this district is the way that you educate all your children. My granddaughter Alma graduated from Santa Rosa High School this past June, and I feel she got a fabulous education. She was accepted into the nursing program at UCLA, one of 40 students accepted. And like I say, you have a very diverse district, all the way from Piner to Elsie to Montgomery and Maria Carrillo in Santa Rosa, and you do a very good job of educating these kids. I think you have a lot of good programs. I like the fact that there are lots of vocational options, again, because not every kid wants to go to college, but I think you, they need to be well-trained to step into the workforce or also move on to the JC or CSU, UC systems. And I think I'm really, I would not hesitate to send any of my children or grandchildren to any school in Santa Rosa.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff. I forgot the next question. What would you like to accomplish as a board member?
I would like to continue the good work that the board is doing with the schools. I would like to see more, if it's possible, vocational options, like carpentry, electrician, you know, more hands-on stuff is what I would like to do.
And so what would your priority be, you know, if you had to pick one thing?
More hands-on skills, like, again, like I said, electrical, electrician. We need these jobs, especially when we're rebuilding after this, you know, disaster we had last year. You know, we need good-skilled carpenters, we need good HVAC people, we need good electricians, as well as, you know, continuing to do what we do here in educating our kids to move on to the next level.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Polis, that's your third question, and thank you for being a candidate for us.
You're welcome.
As a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or primary role?
I think the primary role of a trustee is to help govern, to find and fix the budget, and to hire the superintendent. It is definitely not to micromanage. If I was, if I were selected for this and I would want to visit the schools in District Two, first thing I would do is to call the superintendent and say, "I'd like to visit Piner High School." How would, how would I go about doing that? And then follow that chain of command.
All right, Jeff, I have question number four. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents, family, and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
I think the most important thing we do is listen, you know, and get out and get involved in the community. Like I would, if selected, I would go activate my Rotary membership so I could, you know, use that as an avenue to kind of get a pulse on what's happening out there. Be involved. Go to football games, go to basketball games, go to visual and performing arts events, you know, be accessible, but basically, listen.
Mr. Polis, could you please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board?
My background is in education. I was in the classroom for 15 years, and I was a site administrator for 11 years. And I've worked at five or six different districts. I'd have to write them out for you. But because of that, I believe I have an understanding of how schools work in the classroom, on the site as an administrator. And one of the districts I worked, Los Banos, was a very small district. I mean, you got to know the board members on a personal, a personal level, and you interacted with them, you know, both onsite and offsite. I, I think that would be my best strength, is I know how schools work, I know how they're supposed to work, I know when they're not working, and I have some pretty good ideas how to fix them.
Jeff, I have the next question. What will you do to become a more effective, let me say it again, how will you, how will you do to become more effective as a board member?
First thing, like I said, is I'd renew my membership in Rotary. Yeah, because Rotary is one of these, for lack of a better term, pillars of the community. They really know what's going on, they really have, are involved in the community. Again, also, visit the schools in my district first, and then hopefully get a chance to visit all the schools in the city. But that, first and foremost, yeah, get back into Rotary.
Thank you.
I have your next question. Would you likely run for the seat after one term?
Yes.
Mine isn't a yes or no. I have the last one now, Polis. You will, you'll be a board representative from your area in the Northwest.
Correct.
How does that inform the work that you do, and how do you view your responsibilities relative to that area versus all students in the district?
I may represent that area, but I'm not going to push an agenda for that area. I think we have to be global. We have to do what's best for all students. We have to, you know, that's, in the short, we have to do what's best for all of our students. The toughest decision I think a board member has to make is when to cut the budget, and how much to cut, and where to cut. Because we all know, and you guys have all sat there, what you do impacts kids, parents, teachers, and staff. And I think that, while I would represent the interests and issues put forth in my district, I would also work to integrate them globally.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, that's it. You can go back to the conference room until we call you back.
Well, I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying.
Thanks.
We've got eight questions, we're each going to ask you one, and I will start, and that is, what are you proud of in this district?
Well, I'm proud of being a product of this district. I've gotten to be involved with this district from the perspective as a student. I went to Brook Hill, Slater, Montgomery, and then I have gotten to know this district as a teacher, being an English teacher at Piner High School for eight years. And then I had the pleasure of being a parent for a district school. Both my sons went to Piner High School. And now I work at the JC and get to see the results of the products of this district on a daily basis, working with students that have gone through the schools of this district. And I think what I'm most proud of is that recently, the resiliency that this board has shown, and this district has shown through declining enrollment, budget crisis, the fires, and the work that you've had to do as the leaders and the policymakers has actually been incredible. And now, as my sons have moved on, and I just really felt passionate about getting back involved with this district and being part of what has been, just the, being a part of trying to be effective and continuing the legacy of the Santa Rosa City Schools that I experienced as a student and as a parent and a teacher, and I want to give back in a different way and be involved in a different way. Thank you.
Hi, Jill.
Hi.
What would you like to accomplish as a board member?
Some things that are really important to me. One is the active and diligent recruitment of excellent instructors and teachers, faculty and staff into this area, and career-minded educators. That's really important to me. And then working towards a support system that retains high-level, quality, career-minded educators in this district. That's very important to me. I think that the issues of budget and declining enrollment, obviously, are a major concern. I think a lot of the issues that we're facing at Santa Rosa Junior College are mirrored in this district as well, so we're kind of all in this together as far as public education in Santa Rosa goes. So I'm very, I understand there's a limited amount of resources and funds, and these are intense times to be involved in public education in California. And so I really want to be an active part of learning more about that and making sound decisions, budget decisions, that allow our schools to keep growing, progressing, and... progressing, and working towards student success, regardless of the resources we have in front of us, and being creative about that. And I think finally, something that's very passionate to me is just in times of budget crisis and limited resources, I think things like extracurricular activities that the schools provide, like athletics, and clubs, and vocational and industrial arts and education, those things are often on the chopping block. And I think those are a huge asset that will help work towards student success with a lot of our students, and help them balance what they're trying to do succeeding academically, but also that's a place where we can meet the students where they are and engage them in different ways in our schools. And so I think it's really important that we protect and hopefully eventually develop and continue to grow programs like that as well.
Out of the different answers you gave me, is there a priority you have?
Well, I don't think you can ignore the budget. I think, you know, it's very frustrating from the teacher's side, and I'm usually looking at things, most of my career from the teacher's side, that sometimes things feel all about money, and decisions are made all about money. So I think that we have to be really smart in how we spend our money, and listen to our teachers on the best ways to spend our money to help our students. And so I just don't see any way around that. And something that I didn't say earlier that is particularly dear to my heart too is just addressing the achievement gap that we have between our highest ranking or successful students and our lowest ranking, most at-risk students, and bridging that gap as far as dealing with standards. And, but I think that the budget is something that is kind of a framework, that we have to deal with that, we have to understand what it is, and we have to be creative and smart on how we are spending our precious dollars here at this district in order to support our students, support our teachers, and retain high-level educators that can keep moving us forward.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I have your third question, hi, Ms. McCormick.
Hi.
Thank you for being here with us. So as a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or primary role?
I think the primary purpose and role of the board is to make policy and to be the leaders of the district. I think that's the purpose of the board. So I think the, my purpose as a trustee would be that needs to be the focus on what we're doing, and we have to do a good job anytime we're making a decision with any issue that we're faced with, being diligent about going out, doing the research, getting the stakeholders, getting the input from not only experts outside, but especially experts within our district that we already have, and making really solid, grounded policy and leadership decisions that are going to move this district forward and build off the success that we've already had. So I really feel like that's our role as a board and a board member, is to do that.
All right, Jill, I have question number four. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents, family, and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Well, I think the move to having a board that's representing specific areas within the district, I think that is a huge step forward in just some balance, some equity and representation. And we, we all hear things in the neighborhoods that we're in, and having, you know, really living there and being connected to the neighborhood and the community and understanding the issues, I think that is one of the best ways that the information from the students, from the parents, from the communities, from those staffs can get to this board when we're making policy. And so I think just that step to moving to different areas is really going to be helpful. But the board, as I think this is a great example where you did an excellent job of reaching out to the community and say, "Hey, we have an open seat in Area 2. People need to get involved," and, you know, publishing that stuff on your website, telling teachers, having administrators and, you know, people who are parents involved, knowing that that was open and communicating that and saying that there's a need, and getting that message out, I think that is a great example of what we need to be doing here as far as communicating with the district. And I really do feel like, and I know I've, I've felt this and saw this when I was an English teacher at Piner, and I definitely feel and see it now that I'm still an educator at Santa Rosa JC, is that we do often need to, but we do, there's, we can spend a lot of money going outside the district to bring in experts to consult and tell us what's going on and what we need to do and decisions we need to make. And sometimes we need that, I really do believe it's helpful. But I do think we have incredibly talented faculty and staff right here within the district, and we really have to be, work with them collaboratively and reach out to them and use the expertise we already have with our team right here. I think that's the, probably the best way to really get to the heart of the issues we need to deal with.
Thank you. Could you please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board?
Well, as I said before, I've been, my whole life has been involved with Santa Rosa City Schools. I will say that my, I was an English major in college, and I did teach English for several years. I'm a very strong reader, and I know that is an important skill that board members need, and I feel very comfortable, you know, reading, analyzing, and extrapolating important information out of the amount of documents and research that board members need to do. I'm a highly organized person, I'm an energetic person, education is my passion. It truly is my passion, I've dedicated my entire career to it. And I feel like probably my number one strength is that I've spent the last 24 years in education, but the last 19 years working with student athletes, and everything focused with success and student athletes is focused on meeting the student athletes where they are and finding ways to work towards student success, regardless of where they're starting. And I feel like I'm an expert in that. I do it every day, and I have students walk onto my pool deck and into my classroom at the JC that are highly qualified, ready to go, and then I have a lot of people that are not. And yet, we still have to make them successful in a very short amount of time. And I feel like that's what I do as, as a professional. I find a lot of joy in that, and I feel like that's totally in my wheelhouse, and I want to bring that energy to this district.
Jill, I have the next question. What will you do to become more effective as a board member?
Well, I think early on is just learning, really learning the job. You know, as I said before, my background is as a teacher and a parent volunteer, and seeing it from that perspective, which is a great perspective to have. And I think I can be a strong advocate for our faculty and staff as a member of the board. But I think I'm going to need to really learn and understand what does it take to create policy and leadership, and, and what are our responsible, what are my responsibilities? And just learning the process, I think is going to be the most important thing in the first year to understand, so I can just streamline, become more effective, and really get down to the nitty-gritty of the business that we need to take care of.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you likely run for the seat after one term?
That's a great question. I've been thinking, I've been thinking a lot about that. I tend to be a very loyal person, and once I get into something, I stick with it for a long time. And I really, I left Piner High School at a time when I was a member of one of those small learning communities. I don't, that was way before your time, but, and so there was some political strife when those were being dismantled, and that was a hard time to be an educator there because I saw the power of those, the student success that was coming out of small learning communities. And so at that time, and then Maria Correa was opening up, Elsie Allen was opening up, so there was a lot of shifting and movement, and it was a very dynamic and intense time to be a young professional in the, in the district. And I was so devoted to Piner, I couldn't wrap my brain around going to teach at another high school, like it was going to break my heart. I didn't know how to deal with it because I was so invested there. And the opportunities came up at the JC, and I've been there, this is my 19th year at the JC now. And so I made, I did make the switch. I couldn't bring myself to go teach at another high school at that time, but, but I went to the JC, and I've been there for 19 years. And so my hunch is that, once I get into something and invest in something, I want to be there for the long haul. So tonight, I would say, yeah, I think I would run again if I had the opportunity.
Jill, I've got the last question.
Yes.
You would be the trustee from your area. How does that inform your work? And how do you view your responsibilities vis-à-vis your area versus students in the entire district?
I think that's a great question. That was one of my questions to you, is coming in as an Area 2 trustee, are there specific responsibilities I have for the schools in my area? I do feel like I've lived in the Area 2 area for 24 years. And so I feel like I do have some, a good perspective for what the schools in that area need and want, and things that are unique to our area. But I think just getting out and getting in there and visiting the schools, talking to the parents, talking to the students, talking to the educators, is the best way to really know and listen to what people have to say and get involved and be involved, and talk to the people who aren't involved and ask them why. But on the flip side of that, and I'm excited about this because I went to the schools on the east side of town, which, you know, my experience and my son's experience have been similar in some ways and very different in some ways because of the communities that we grew up in. And so I feel like I have my long time ago experience to draw on, but I feel perhaps more disconnected from some of the other schools in the district. And so I really excited at the thought, the opportunity of being able to get out there and reconnect and see what are the overall issues that every single school in the district needs to be dealing with, like, you know, the new standard A through G and what that looks like, top-down and bottom-up, and how we're all going to work on that, but also the unique, specific flavor and differences and needs and stresses and strains and strengths in all these different areas. I'm really excited to get out there and see that. And I think I need to, to make informed decisions as a trustee, that I really need to have an understanding of the idiosyncrasies in each area, but also the, the overall reaching issues so we can move forward successfully as a district.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, so we can, that's it, you know?
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
And so now we're going to take about, thank you, five minutes for the board to do our initial ranking privately, so we'll take a five-minute break to the meeting. And Renee, you can bring the other candidates down, you can stay there.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm doing this all wrong. Forget everything I just said. Okay. We went over this so many times, and I'm going to change the order, and now I can't remember it. So we're going to do public comment first, and I only have, I think, two blue cards. So if anybody else wants to do, but you can bring the candidates down, yes. That part I was right on. One of three things. Shit, they can come down now, you can stay. That, I was also right on that.
Okay, should I stay here?
You should, you can go anywhere you want.
Okay.
I'm totally making this up as I go along at this point. Yeah, yeah, we will. So I have two blue cards, and I'm going to wait till all the candidates come back out, but does anyone else have a blue card to submit? The mayor of Heelsburg. All right, so we're going to go ahead, we just have three blue cards. First is Kristen Carpenter, and then Evan or Ever Flores.
You guys, you guys don't have to sit down here.
You can say where.
Yeah, I mean, it puts you kind of in a center stage, but sitting up in there is probably more comfortable, so.
And then for Jet Mansell. So Kristen Carpenter.
Hi. Hi, my name's Kirsten Carpenter, and, sorry. I wanted to speak on support of Jill McCormick, whom I've, I've known for, actually, since our time. We shared a swim team when she was at Montgomery High and I was at Piner. The board could not afford two swim coaches, and so Piner and Montgomery shared a swim coach for our four years, and that's how we met. I wasn't part of my comments, but I thought that was kind of an interesting piece of trivia. I'm very excited that Jill put her hat in the ring for being on the school board, and you've already heard some of the wonderful things that she could bring and add to your leadership and experience. A few things I wanted to touch on were her communication and collaboration skills, which she's had from, you know, not just her experience at being able to communicate and collaborate with staff and teachers and whatnot, but the leadership that she has gained at teaching at the junior college and the different committees that she's been on in the state with the athletics and the swimming foundations that she's been a part of, as well as several other boards on the JC. And that kind of skill of communication and collaboration, where you're trying to bring different viewpoints together to make responsible fiscal decisions, difficult decisions, decisions that will increase student success, finding the kids where they're at and trying to meet them to that standard, I think would bring a lot to our district. Her ability to bring parents, other educators, community members, administration, board members, and try to kind of synthesize the needs of all those communities, and then being able to communicate those is a gift that Jill has. She's very tech-literate, and she is very aware of the challenges that our students have in the 21st century. She's launching students every two years into the world, these young adults coming out of the JC. And she's very concerned about where they're coming from and the gaps that she sees when they enter the JC. And so these A through G requirements that are coming down, Jill is the right person to be able to say, "Okay, we've got this foundation of A through G requirements. If they're coming into the junior college with a bit of a gap, then what can we do to shore up the high schools? If the high schools are finding that they're coming in from the middle schools with a gap, what can we do to shore up the middle schools and so forth?" So I do believe that she sees the district holistically and would be able to, be able to communicate and collaborate with you to find solutions that are not just top-down for graduation requirements, but from the bottom up, and looking at the elementary schools, and how can we bring in talented teachers to be able to close those achievement gaps little by little?
Thank you.
Through every grade level. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Flores? And your first name, I can't, couldn't read it.
It's, it's, can you hear me? It's Ever.
Yeah, Ever, okay.
E V E R, like forever and ever. You will never ever forget it. That's what I promise you.
I will never forget it, I will know it forever.
Thank you, President Close. So I'd like to say that, first of all, I'd like to thank all the candidates for, for putting their, their best foot forward, and I appreciate that they are part of this democratic process. But it saddens me to, to be here, and as a Latino member of this community, and I see that no candidates from this district that was specifically designed to attract more Latino candidates were in the panel today. Furthermore, as a Latino educational leader, I'm also the Heelsburg Area Teachers Association president and a voter of this district. I am very disappointed to, to see that there was no question about teachers, nor about equity for students of college. equity for students of color. However, I do want to commend Jill for discussing the idea of building bridges with our teachers and reducing the educational gap. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my name...
Pratjat Mansal.
Yeah, my name's Pratjat Mansal. I'm a 36-year Santa Rosa City School teacher, and I'm delighted to be here. I want to speak on behalf of Jill McCormick, a former colleague of mine at Piner High School. We were in a learning community that she alluded to in her talk, and it was a most rich time for me to be teaching. One of our central questions is what is community? How do you make community? And I just think that I could talk about how much I enjoyed collaborating with her, and there's been a lot said about Jill, but let me just tell you, we need roots right now in this district. I walked in, and President Close was talking to our union, and there's a lot of cultural tension right now in our city. And I just want to say that out of everyone you could possibly put on the board, I really recommend Jill. She's like a tree that has been rooted into this system. She's from the public schools of Santa Rosa. She decided to teach in Santa Rosa, and she continues to stay here. Her two sons, I've known when she had them. I just cannot tell you how much this board needs Jill McCormick right now to come and sit at the table with you and collaborate, but also help create a system that will honor public education in Santa Rosa City Schools. We need to get back to that, is talk about what we're doing for public education in the city of Santa Rosa. And I think she's the fresh face, and I definitely support the other people for coming up, but if we don't accept her willingness to share her background and her roots, and her willingness to reach out and be with us now when we need somebody that's got credibility, teachers need her. Thank you so much for considering her. I think it would be a really wise choice on the part of this board, this crazy way we're doing this, but hey, we're doing it, and I hope that you make a good decision tonight and choose Jill McCormick. I can't say enough about her, and like I said, the culture of this district is at a really interesting time. I hope that we create traditions and rituals and ways to connect that goes way beyond just systems, but we talk about people, and Jill knows how to do that. She's a coach, she's a teacher, she's a mother, and she's a responsible human being, and I hope you choose her tonight. So thank you for letting me speak on her behalf.
Thank you. Okay, now we will take a five-minute break. I'm certain about that now. Okay, five minutes, and we'll come back at you.
Okay, we've tallied the initial, we did initial polling. And so at this time, five board members have ranked Ms. McCormick as their first choice. And then one board member ranked Ms. Kolchweiser as their first choice and one, Mr. Polis, as their first choice. So at this time, the board, we can engage in discussion about the candidates or I'm also prepared to take a motion. Director Carl?
I move that we appoint Jill McCormick.
Second?
A second. Moved by Director Carl and second by Director Pew to appoint Jill McCormick as our board member from area, trustee area two. Roll call vote, please, Lori.
Let's wait until we get Ron back.
I thought he was just in my blind spot created by Director Fong all this time.
Maybe we could have a discussion and we could just, while we're waiting.
We can discuss when there's a motion pending, yeah.
Well, we can thank all of our...
We can.
Well, I was going to say that I would like to move that we have nine members on the board from now going forward because really it was, I was very impressed with everyone and I hope that we can somehow get you involved in the district in a different way if that's what happens here.
Yeah, it takes, it's brave to put yourself through this kind of public process and to do that for a service position is very admirable.
Yeah, frankly, it's almost easier to run for the board than to sit here and have this kind of forum. We worked very long and hard about what the process should be so that anybody who was willing to put themselves out there wouldn't be embarrassed by the process or wouldn't feel as if somehow because they weren't picked that they didn't belong on this board. What was interesting is that we had five applications and two people dropped out in the process, one of them specifically because of the concern about time and another one that it seemed like that was the likely thing as well. And when I read the three papers, it was clear that we could do very well with any one of you. So it's nice to know from that district, from that area, that there are qualified people and I suspect there are a whole bunch more that are qualified, but that the three of you put yourself out there to go through this process is very much appreciated.
I agree. We were lucky to have three great applicants. We had five actually good applicants and the three of you tonight. So Ron, to catch you up because I thought you were sitting behind Lori there. There is, there's a line. There is a motion by Director Carl, second by Director Pew to appoint Jill McCormick to the board for area two.
Okay. May I just say, I also want to reiterate my thanks for the Pioneer community. My heart's in that community too. I did my student teaching there and taught there for several years. And as we've moved to single-member districts, you know, it was disappointing that we didn't have anybody run for the race, but I'm so happy that you stepped forward and I think you'll be a model for people in the future too. There's a lot to, the people in that community have a lot to offer. So thank you all that came down here.
Okay, Lori, roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Board Member Mackin?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Congratulations. Huge thank you to all three of you again. Any one of you could have served admirably, I'm sure. And we are going to take another five-minute break.[304.88]